Okay, I think it's 7:00 PM, so welcome to the City Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 7th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three proclamations tonight. I guess we'll start with Constitution Week. Be the first one. We have some folks here, I think, only Morton is here. We've got some other folks with you. Come on up. Always great to celebrate the Constitution. I guess Brenda, you're going to read the, okay, if you go ahead and read the proclamation, then we'll let you say a few words.
Whereas September 17th, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Now therefore, Wyn Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, does hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd of 2021 as Constitution Week in Manhattan, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787.
Okay, give you the, you can say a few words.
Well, we and the Daughters of the American Revolution are grateful and honored to have our City Commission respect and acknowledged. Constitution Week in this way is something we all should always cherish and be very proud of, and we appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Schaber. I represent the Daughters of the American Colonists, and that goes back quite a few more years, but we work together on things. It's nice to be here.
Thank you. I don't know how many folks from the bicycle group are here. If you want to come up for the, we're going to do the proclamation of the Manhattan Bike and Walk Month, which is always fun. We're getting more trails out there. We've got some nice wide ones on part of town now, and we're going to keep working on those, I think. Got a great master plan. So we have a proclamation for Manhattan Bike and Walk Month. Can you read that one?
Whereas biking and walking are clean, quiet, and efficient modes of transportation and are simple ways to incorporate physical activity into one's daily routine. A bicycle requires little roadway space, thereby helping to reduce traffic congestion and traffic-related stress. Now therefore, Wyn Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Manhattan Bike Walk Month, and encourage all citizens to try out walking and biking, and for everyone on the roadways to treat each other with respect and dignity, no matter what their mode of travel.
I guess it doesn't include links to them. Wait, say a few words.
I'll say a few words. I'm Carol Seven. I'm the Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I'd like to thank the city in supporting Bicycle and Pedestrian Month and/or Bike Walk Month, as we're naming it. And this month is usually celebrated in May. This year, we're celebrating in September, and hopefully, everyone celebrates every month because we all walk and bike and use other modes of transportation every day. Thanks.
Thank you. We have the Recovery Month proclamation. I think Robin Foley are here and a couple of other folks, Pawnee Mental Health. How you doing? Okay, Brenda, if you go ahead and read this one.
Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and overall wellness, and prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover from substance use and mental disorders. It is critical to educate our policymakers, friends, and family members, healthcare providers, and businesses that substance use and mental disorders are treatable, and that people should seek assistance for these conditions with the same urgency as they would any other health condition. The United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Pawnee Mental Health Services observe Recovery Month to raise awareness and understanding of recovery from substance use and mental disorders. Now therefore, Wyn Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, does hereby declare September 2021 as Recovery Month in Manhattan, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public, and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Manhattan to recognize the importance of recovery, and to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of substance abuse and mental disorders, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people.
Give you the proclamation. Thanks for reading it. If you want to say anything.
Yes, you know, I think that when you think about what we've been through just this last year and a half in our country, just the whole concept of recovery is something that we wonder about. And I'm here to tell you that recovery is a legitimate concept. It is possible. People can recover. It doesn't matter what the injury is, what the experience is. Oftentimes, people emerge stronger than they did before. Maybe not in the same way as before, but in different ways. So I think it's important to think about that and to really embrace the idea that, yes, prevention does work, treatment is effective, and people can, and they do recover. So I just want to say thank you to the city for proclaiming September as Recovery Month.
Yeah, thank you for all the work you do. That's for sure. Evan, you want to speak too? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
This is the first legislative meeting of the month, and so we have open public comments on any topic that is not on the consent agenda or the regular agenda. And we had two speakers that signed up in advance, and the first one would be Andrew Elliott. If you're here, if you could, and remember to please state your name and full address so that Brenda can copy that down.
Everyone hear me all right? Seems to be.
I think we're good.
Okay. My name is Andrew Elliott. I live at 2108 Prairie Lee Place, and tonight, I'm going to share my thoughts regarding the Eisenhower Community Center. Specifically, the role that it needs to play as part of a broader strategy to address the food desert in Northview, and the role that city staff and elected officials need to play in creating public projects that are community-driven and relevant to addressing community needs. In all of that, I'm going to explain why you, the City Commission, needs to find funding to secure kitchen equipment for the Eisenhower Community Center. More critically, I'm going to explain how a repeated failure of city staff and officials to prioritize and practice equity and accountability sits at the heart of our community's systemic inequities. City planning and development are not spontaneous design processes. They are not random. They involve intentional, explicit choices, and in Manhattan, the choices this city's leadership has made have resulted in broad and deep inequity in this community. Northview residents live in a food desert that they did not create. Food deserts do not emerge on their own. They are the result of lapses in city planning or willful ignorance of the consequences of poor city planning, and they result in inequitable and ultimately unsustainable outcomes for everyone. Health data from the Riley County Health Department and the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition shows that the city has failed Northview. 100% of Northview is in a food desert, and people in Northview die younger and have worse overall health outcomes than people living in other neighborhoods in Manhattan. Those are some of the side effects of ineffective, inequitable city planning, and this is actively harming people. It is reducing the quality of lives of folks who live and work in this community and who are a vital part of keeping the economy running. City staff and elected officials are accountable for maintaining this food desert in Northview and for the complex economic, health, and social impacts that this kind of systemic inequity produces. We have repeatedly and exhaustively tried to collaborate with the city on this issue for years, and in each instance, we've been met with hollow commitments, dismissal, or under-the-table negotiations that completely dodge and undermine the core issues that have been driving this problem, a lack of equity and accountability in the conduct of the city staff and elected officials. On behalf of the community members here with me tonight, the 385 people who signed our initial petition, and those who are not able to be here in person, we once again ask that the City Commission instruct the city manager and his staff to secure funding for kitchen equipment at the Eisenhower Community Center in the 2022 city budget. We ask that the city use its expertise and its human resources to develop the administrative, technical, and operational facets for a kitchen designed to meet community needs as a critical first step toward addressing food insecurity in Northview. At its core, this is an equity problem. The City of Manhattan failed to practice equitable community engagement, so it failed to identify relevant community needs from stakeholders. In so doing, the city has spent public dollars on a project that completely ignores critical needs in Northview. This is also a problem of accountability. Throughout the design and construction process, the city simultaneously ignored known health equity problems and community voices bringing attention to those problems. What the city has done is ethically wrong, and it's economically short-sighted and irresponsible. Funding a kitchen at the Eisenhower Community Center is a powerful and effective first step to correcting these problems. It is a step that has the foresight to understand and recognize that this is a wise choice towards a more sustainable, economically resilient, healthier, and more humane Manhattan. It's also a step towards greater equity and accountability. With this commission acknowledging that mistakes have been made, and that you are all willing to listen to, respect, and equitably engage community members in creating public policies and projects, that is this commission's role and responsibility to the public. Start practicing accountability. Start practicing equity in earnest. Find the funding for this kitchen and make good on your responsibilities as public servants to support the interest and well-being of everyone in this community.
We have one other person, I think Trent Ambrose, you signed up to speak.
Trent Ambrose, 35, 24, Vanessa Drive, and good evening, Commissioners. I wanted to say a word of thanks to the city staff and crews that worked on our water main break in front of our house. I walked outside, checked our mail at 5:00, and there was water shooting out of the asphalt in our road, and 6:00 the next morning, they finally left, and then they came back at 1:00 on Saturday afternoon, and one poor guy stayed until 6:00 the next morning trying to get the job done. They were very communicative, they were very pleasant, and we really just wanted to say thank you to the city, the dedicated crew that came and responded to that emergency, and to get our water back on. So that's all I wanted to say tonight, was just thank you and publicly acknowledge their efforts.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment tonight? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comments section and go to Commissioner Comments. And we have Commissioner Morris is joining us by Zoom, so we'll start with Linda, so you don't get overlooked.
Thank you, Mayor. I, let me get my adjustment made here. I'd like to thank you and the commission as a whole, the city administration, for accommodating my request to participate remotely tonight, and maybe next meeting also. I'd just like to say that, I want to point out that one of the successes of the North Central Regional Council is one of the items on our agenda this evening, and their role in pulling together the, all of the resources, meaning people and programs, to, for the item on the agenda that is $5.9 million in funding for our airport. And so it takes all of us, no one entity can do it all, and so I just want to, you know, when we think about what different ones of us, different organizations can accomplish, this is...
The connection fell apart there, so we'll come back to Linda. She comes back on the audio. We'll go to Commissioner Ready.
Sure, thank you. Hopefully she does come back on. Not too much, but I do want to just let the community know that there is a Day of Remembrance Ceremony at the City Park Pavilion organized by Linda Bishop and her organization at 7:00 PM, I believe, 6:45, I guess. And there'll be a lot more ceremonies going on throughout our community, as well as Fort Riley. I hope everybody partakes and remembers and recognizes the day, as well as the more work we have to do going forward. And that's all my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Now Linda, she's back.
Yes, I'm here.
You want to continue? We got cut off on your comments, so if you want to finish.
Oh, I didn't realize it. Thank you. I was just trying to call attention to the good work of the Flint Hills Regional Council in bringing the different governmental units in these seven counties together, and the $5.9 million, let's see, it's called a Local Defense Communities Grant, with the US Department of Defense. Anyway, it's a real success, and means we can move on, and we're a lot closer to raising all the money we need to pave the runway than we would have been otherwise. So I just want to speak, you know, sometimes they're a pretty invisible group, and they're in there working all the time, and it does make a difference. So, thank you.
All right, Erin.
Just real quick, want to draw attention to and thank the people that I've been in contact with over the last couple of weeks since we met regarding the Afghan resettlement team, and while that's not an official city function, it has included a lot of people in our community and in our city have come together, and I just want to take a moment and re-recognize those individuals and organizations. Over 40 civic leaders and over 20 organizations locally have, you know, stepped up and said they want to help, and Fatima and I have been in constant contact. She is a local Afghan-American, US combat veteran, and lost her husband in Afghanistan, so is a Gold Star wife. She and I, this afternoon, had a call with the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops, Director for Refugee Resettlement, and they spoke how highly and surprised a little bit in their chaos. It was nice to see in the heart of America, people being organized. They're calling from their offices in DC, and they're talking to folks in, the governor in Oklahoma, and they're talking to people in Manhattan, Kansas, and it's encouraging because of the organization of the people that have stepped up, and it's just rare. The reason that we've had to kind of do this is unfortunate, but the fact that we can shows how much our, what we have when we put things aside and the power we have to come together and get things done and solve problems, and I just want to say thank you for that. There'll be more. There's between 50,000 and 75,000 refugees coming into America, being vetted through the bases, and at an appropriate time, they'll wind their way into various parts of the United States, including Manhattan, Kansas, and we'll be ready.
Okay, Mark has nothing. All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, are those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. The Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any comments on the consent agenda items?
So I'll just make a comment that I'm going to recuse myself from Item I, B, and Item J, E, both because of my role and employment with the Manhattan Housing Authority and there being a conflict of interest.
Okay, any other comments? So Linda?
Linda Morris, I just want to say that I'm going to be voting no on Item I, II, which is the Back Nine Development, because I would have expected that we would have finalized the sale of the property as a first move with this development. And so I am more inclined to want to receive sufficient compensation for this city property that, in essence, in my view, is owned by all of the taxpayers, and so I'm going to be, I have to oppose the whole development this evening because of my thoughts on that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. Thank you.
Well, I just want clarification from Ron that in this particular one, we are not, that is not in the proposal, is that right, the sale of the property?
That's correct, Commissioner. This is a pre-development agreement that basically puts us in a relationship with this developer, allows them to be the developer of record, indicates a relationship that we'll have to ultimately develop a final development agreement that will have all of those terms, such as the, any compensation due to the city for the real estate and other factors regarding its redevelopment.
And I just wanted that clarification because I do respect Commissioner Morris's perspective on this, but until we get more into those details, I will be supporting that one on this term.
My concern is that by the time we get to the final development, it will be too late to make this point, and I want to make the point strongly that the resources of the city are important to the people in this community. So anyway, just, that's my little protest. Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda only? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close public comments or any other Commissioner comments?
No, but Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could you please call a roll, City Clerk?
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes, except I vote no on Item I, II, which is the Back Nine Development.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes, except recusing myself on Item I, B, and Item J, E.
Commissioner, ready?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. On Item I, I-1B and J-1E, four to zero with Commissioner Estabrook stating, and the pre-development agreement for I, II, carries four to one with Commissioner Morris voting against, and the rest of the items carry five to zero.
Okay, excellent. Then we'll move on to the next item, which is public hearing, and consider the 2022 budget and revenue-neutral rate. And are we going to have a presentation on that first? Okay, she's going to do that instead of Jason. All right.
Commissioners, I'll introduce Rena Neal, our Director of Finance. Welcome tonight, Rena.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, sure. Tonight, the finance staff, as well as city administration, will present the 2022 budget. We have Tom Calico with Baker Tilly on the Zoom call with us, and he's available to discuss our ARPA funds that we have received. After reviewing the budget, the mayor will open the public hearing for the revenue-neutral rate, and once that hearing has closed, the City Commission must consider Resolution 0907, 21-A, which authorizes the levying of a property tax rate that exceeds the revenue-neutral rate. The mayor will then open the public hearing for the 2022 city budget and consider first reading of an ordinance adopting the 2022 city budget. So just want to give you an overview of tonight's meeting. We're going to discuss ARPA funding, and then highlight our proposed 2022 budget, and as I mentioned, we'll have two public hearings, one for the revenue-neutral rate, we'll close that, and then we'll open up for the 2022 city budget, and then we'll close that. After the August 24th work session, city administration reached out to Baker Tilly, our municipal financial advisor, and as I mentioned, Tom Calico was on the call with us, and he had two of his staff on the call also, to discuss their efforts working with other municipalities related to ARPA funding. They have conducted numerous webinars, which our staff have participated in for their clients, and will serve as a resource to the city as needed. Included in your packet is a letter from Tom, the principal at Baker Tilly. Some highlights since we last met, we have retained Baker Tilly as our consultant for this process. We recently filed our interim report with the Department of Treasury reflecting $0 allocated or expended to date, and that was due on August 31st. We do not recommend allocating ARPA funds to reduce the 2022 budget or offset the mill levy, and that's based on just conversations that we've had with Baker Tilly on those webinars, as well as with the League of Municipalities. And then our funds are intended to be used for the fund, the seven eligible categories which are listed in that fourth bullet, and we discussed last time as well. We are finalizing our revenue replacement calculation this week, and we'll develop and file a project and expenditure report by October 31st, and then we'll have to do so for every quarter thereafter. And as I mentioned, Tom is on the phone on Zoom with us to answer any questions throughout this presentation. And that's just a brief overview of where we are at with ARPA. This next slide just talks about our six work sessions that we've had prior to this meeting and where we're at to date. Included in your packet was the 2022 analysis of assessed valuation, and so these next few slides will just highlight that particular document. So our tax base has gone up by 0.6% of the assessed valuation from 2021, and that is a property tax increase of $2,258,000, $2,258,236 for a mill levy increase of about 3.5 And then this is just a snippet of what was provided in your packet, and off to the right is just a calculation of the differences from the August 24th budget work session compared to what we're presenting this evening. So we have presented 5.079 mils, and we're at 3.5 mils, and the differences are reflected off to the right. This slide just provides a historical overview of our mill levies from year to year, from 2018 city budget to the 2022 public hearing to date. And then off to the right, we just have the property taxes that were generated or budgeted for those respective years. So based on that assessed valuation document, and there's a typo, the mills dedicated to city services are actually 18.697. A mill is calculated at about $598,000 in property taxes, and our total property taxes dedicated to city services is a little bit over 11 million. dedicated to city services is a little bit over 11 million. And so if you look at that assessed valuation document, that has property taxes for city services related to general fund, employee benefit fund, fire equipment, reserve, KPNF, and bond and interest. And then combining all of the taxing jurisdictions, the total is about $105 million, of which the city's portion is 10.6% of that property taxes allocated. And then in terms of all of the city's mill levy and property taxes, city operations, meaning general fund, is 14% of all that is reflected on this assessed valuation. So the total mill levy increase is 3.5. That's budgeted, and then the general fund makes up 14% of that. The next two slides just reflect what a 0.6% valuation increase will generate in terms of property tax increase for residents of $200,000 and a commercial property of $500,000. And so we have our city taxes from the city commission's authority, and then the city taxes related to RCPD and the library, and then the county, state of Kansas, and then USD 383. And that's a total of $118 estimated. And then for the business, commercial property of $500,000, the total is estimated at $553. Their valuation calculations are different. Residence is at 11.5%, and then business is at 25%. The next few slides are just about a summary of our budget and what we've discussed since May. The general fund reflects the increase to the beginning cash balance, so that is where that $2 million plus comes from. Special revenue funds are capturing the outside service requests. Our bond and interest fund is being reduced about $5 million, and that's due to the star bonds being paid off and the moral obligation no longer needing to be reflected in our budget. And then our enterprise funds, we are capturing the increase in our cash balance for the wastewater fund. And so our total increase to our budget is a little bit over $2.5 million, at 169 million. This slide is capturing the CIP funding summary for 2022, and the various funding sources for a total of 2.3 million, and all of the information is reflected in your packet as well in terms of the big 2022 budget document by each department. This slide just gives an overview of the 2018 budget request to the 2022 budget request. The increase is substantial, and it's due to the need to replace various equipment that has been deferred over the years. And just to highlight some of the things that I've already mentioned, as well as what is reflected on our assessed valuation growth document. So we have an increase of about 0.6% to the city's tax base for the 2022 property taxes, which equates to $347,774 in property taxes for the general fund, excuse me. Included in that general fund request for 2022 is, there are seven positions, and they're reflected in your packet in the memo, and with a budget impact of $243,000, and then 4% for cost of living and a step increase. Excuse me. So again, to summarize that valuation growth document, the mill levy increase for those outside entities is 1.919 mils, and then for city services, 1.58 mils. We are anticipating that our sales taxes will remain flat, and that is just due to what has been coming in historically over the last five years. We know that our sales taxes are not a reliable and predictable funding source. We are also anticipating that our revenue streams will not be back to normal or pre-COVID numbers, which is 2019 or prior. And then again, our published budget is at 169 million, and based on those reasons reflected on the slide. During the six work sessions, you have received outside agency requests, and so those are just summarized for you on this tab, on this slide, excuse me, and like I said, all of them have come before you in some manner. This slide reflects transient guest tax, and just want to highlight that this is a fund that we'll continue to monitor. We are budgeting 14% less than what was budgeted. Those funds are used not only to pay the chamber for their services, but also Aggieville Business Association, Downtown Manhattan, Inc., the Manhattan Arts Center, and the Wolf House. And then we also use those funds to help cover debt related to transient guests and hospitality services. We have a couple of things for you to consider. We are seeking direction on any changes that you would like for the 2022 budget, and just a reminder that you can reduce your budget for 2022, but we cannot increase it, mill levy or amount. And then just the upcoming meetings, we'll have another meeting on the 21st of September for the second reading of the budget and establish the tax rates, and then October we'll have to certify the tax rate and the 2022 budget to the county clerks. And then also, October 5th, we'll have a public hearing. We are going to have some budget amendments for 2021. And before I close and we open up the public hearing, just want to remind everyone that we have to conduct two public hearings, one on the revenue neutral rate, we'll have to close that, and then the city commission will make a decision, and then the second is a public hearing on the proposed 2022 budget, and then that will be closed as well. And then if there's any additional direction you would need to give to the city manager and staff, we can address that during this time as well. Are there any questions of myself, Ron, Jason, or Tom?
I'll just ask Linda, since she's out there on the Zoom. Do you have any comments, Linda? She's not answering, so.
I can stop sharing. Let me see.
Maybe, I'm not sure she heard you, but.
She's not seeing anything. Go ahead.
There we go. It jumps around a little bit. Thank you. I appreciate the summarized information this evening with the whole picture, because over the months and over the meetings, we've received bits and pieces focusing on one thing and then another, and this is just a really comprehensive overview of it. I know that we all try to hold the budget down, certainly, and during a COVID year, it's just hard. And then the fact that we can't use the COVID money that's coming to the community to help with our budget at all just doesn't compute, but that's what we're being told. So I've looked at the last four years, and we have done a good job of keeping the mill levy rate low, less than one mil, but I think there's a point at which we can't squeeze and keep squeezing any tighter. We have some needs in the community that we have, we just have to deal with. We can't build new buildings and not staff them, and we saw what happened when we can't come up with enough money to open pools. And so either we, the citizens vote for these amenities, and then we need to do our best to, and I believe they are streamlined. I do not believe there's a lot of fluff in their budget. So that's just what I'd like to say as we kick off here.
Yes, thank you, Rena. I think the, in the packet, the top things to know about the proposed budget was very informative, kind of breaking it down and reading as we read through the materials. So for city operations, 0.524 is actually what's going from the 3.5 mils, the mill levy that we proposed, to actual city operations, and I think that needs to be stressed. The 13 new personnel requests, 4% cost of living and merit, and the capital improvement projects. I've been on the commission long enough to know that we do keep pushing those capital improvement projects to the next year, and the next year, and the next year, and then we kind of forget about them after a while. I think on your slide, the Aggieville Business Association was there twice for the outside agencies, so I'm sure that was just a typo, unless that was the reason it was meant to be.
I can go back and look at that.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I was supposed to twice. Sorry about that.
Was that just a typo?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, just to make sure they're not getting $260,000. And, you know, we did discuss Be Able, and I think the possibility of looking at CWDG funds is something for them to look into. I understand that. I think with the social services and their application process, kind of not fitting at this year, maybe next year they want to look at it a little bit closer. I'm open for discussion, and I'll wait for public comment, and then we will continue from there.
Okay, so seeing other commissioners' comments on the idea of the revenue neutral rate, take any public comments on that. And I guess just to clarify, to make it simple, you know, the revenue neutral rate, essentially, you know, we're going to exceed it, and that's based on actual dollars. So you're just about every year going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, because if you don't, you can't capture any growth in the city, because you'd be sending the same amount of dollars every year. And that's what this first part of the public hearing is. It's just to say, hey, we're going to exceed it, and when I looked at that requirement, it's probably something the city's going to end up doing every year. Otherwise, you're never going to capture any growth. So that's just a situation we're in. So is there any public comment on the revenue neutral rate? If you wish to speak, come forward, be sure you state your name and your address.
Monica McFarlane, 213 Parker Drive. I wanted to thank the Commissioners. Some of you have requested, and I was not here last Tuesday, but I did hear and see the video that you had requested to have somebody here to speak about ARPA. I do think that unfortunately, the discussion is being had pretty late in the game, especially when we're speaking about having the public hearing for the meeting tonight, and whether or not the recommendation is to not use it this year, it's a little late to be informing the public of that. There's a lot of people that I have spoken to over the last several weeks about the availability of these funds that have come to our community to meet community needs, and they're not very pleased to hear that that hasn't been in discussion. So I myself am not happy about it. I think that there have been several Commissioners who have asked about information for this, and that should have come much earlier than this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Jason Smith. I'm President and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, 501 points. I want to express my appreciation to you and the city staff for your hard work on this year's budget. The challenges we have faced over the last few years with our general economic conditions compounded by COVID has left governing bodies with many difficult choices. We know the city staff has done more with less in 2021, and we appreciate their continuing to offer a high level of service with fewer bodies. At the Chamber, we've tried to play a similar role in helping with city budget issues, including reducing our combined staff by 15%, using significant reserves to fill in for uncollected TGT taxes, and returning over $150,000 in unexpected, unexpended economic development funds to the city in 2021. While nobody is ever pleased with a property tax rate increase, the quandary of rate increase versus service cuts has continued and will continue as a result of economic stagnation over the last decade. One message we want to convey today from our 800-member business organization is a request to not use the limited economic development funds projected by the end of 2022 for other budget issues. We have enormous need to develop product. During a recent meeting with Kansas Department of Commerce staff, one longtime member commented that her experience was people wanted to create jobs in Manhattan, but we don't have the product to attract them. We have to start addressing these needs immediately. This includes developing new lab space, such as what Topeka is doing currently in their downtown, business park expansion, as well as industrial facility development. We have opportunities through new federal and state programs to begin addressing these long-term challenges. However, we believe most, if not all, of these programs will require matching funds. The limited amount that will be unexpended in the economic development fund can help attract these new dollars for key investments. Additionally, we're continuing to advocate for funds to encourage new business startups, particularly in underserved communities and potential new entrepreneurship space. Finally, as we have more projects like BEV Hub considering the community, we must have the funds to be competitive in the current economic development landscape. The needs are great, and funds are limited. However, if we are going to continue to get the current economic trends in the community turned in the right direction, we must start making these investments. We would ask again that you not spend the funds left in the current economic development sales tax fund as a one-time budget fix, or rather, work with your economic development team on prioritizing the investments of these funds and long-term budget solutions. Thank you again for your service and dedication to keeping Manhattan a great place to live, work, and start a business.
Philip Warmore, live on Brockman Street here in Manhattan. I was wondering what was going on or what's being done between the city and the county on the property appraisals, because there's no way we can sell our houses in Northview for reappraised value if they've got water in the basement or the crawl space, because FHA and VA will not approve the loan. And I know I can't sell mine for what's appraised at. My neighbor north of me, and she sold hers last year, she had spent almost $10,000, put in the French drain, but she's still got the sun pump. Two years ago, or three years ago, I was pumping 100 gallons an hour in my basement sun pump. I talked to the appraiser, he said that he didn't know that the water level had got that high. But since then, I found out that two neighbors north of me or west of me on Ewing Road have had water in their basement, and they're higher than I am. Something's got to be done down there. Any questions?
We generally take notes on your comments, and part of our procedure is not to, you know, go into discussions and debates on it, but the staff's got it, and we'll take note of that. Thank you.
Can you sign in, please?
Okay, is there any other comment on the revenue neutral rate?
Hello, my name is Lucas Shivers. I'm at 4016 Coachman, and I represent Be Able. We would just make the request that this would be included in the general fund as part of the social service advisory's contracts. We understand if it can't be, but that would be our request so that we could pursue other opportunities through the other funds that were mentioned. The staff has been great to work with us on this, and we're eager to hopefully get included in that. So, thank you.
Is there any other comment on the revenue neutral rate? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the revenue neutral rate. Is there any further discussion from the city commission? Okay, seeing none, we can do a motion, which again, the revenue neutral rate basically Okay, seeing none, we can do a motion, which again, the revenue neutral rate basically says we're going to spend more dollars than we did last year, even if we had a flat mill levy, we would be exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
May I move that we approve?
I move that we approve Resolution Number 090721A to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Linda Morris, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and two seconds, so if, Brenda, please feel free to call the rule.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hennissall?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrock?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, now we have to conduct now a second public hearing, which is focused on the actual 2022 city budget.
Yes.
Okay.
And that information was presented for you, so you can open up for public comment. I think a lot of them provided it during the first round of public comments, but...
All right, so we'll start with public comment on the actual city budget, which is increasing the mill levy by just slightly under three point five?
Yes, three point four nine nine, rounded to three point five.
Okay. So any comments on the mill levy increase? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on that and go back to the commission for comment.
Yeah, I think, like I said, this document was very impactful for me. This year, the Riley County Police Department budget increased the mill levy a little bit more, so when we say three point five, I think only one mill will be going towards the ci- right, one mill will be going towards the city functions. And of that, the delinquency one has been decreased, has been taken out of the budget, among other general fund items, I believe. I do want to discuss if we can use the ARPA funds for, and I don't know if this is the time or the place for this, but to be on par with USD, I believe it's USD 383, and RCPD and Riley County to go be retroactive from July to December for city staff pay. Is that something we can discuss at this budget, or is that not at this budget time?
I mean, if you want to discuss that as part of the budget, it would probably, I don't know, might be more appropriate to be considered in the budget amendment, but certainly budget-related, so as I understand it, you're suggesting that we didn't have any increases for city employees in 2021, because back in 2020, when you passed the budget, we didn't know what we might face, and so those were certainly opportunities we took to be very austere with the budget. Subsequently, we were able to, as others, bring in more revenue than we had thought we might, and so some of the agencies have gone back and instituted pay increases for their employees for a portion of the year. I believe most of them have gone for half the year from July 1st forward. We have not had that discussion here. I don't know, Tom, if, we didn't discuss this specifically, but if, whether the ARPA funds can be used to increase general cost of living wages for existing employees.
Ron, clearly, the Act allows for premium pay for essential workers, so there may be a possibility there, and it is permissible to be retroactive back to March of our year. The only other element that could allow us to use it for pay would be to document that the work that performed was as direct, you know, a direct result of the pandemic.
So is that a yes?
So it would be similar to what the CARES funding was last year, where you had certain divisions that were responsive to COVID that might qualify for some of those funds. We'd have to do a little bit more research on that particular one. More likely, it would have to come from cash balances would be the primary way we would have to pay for that aspect of things.
Well, I just wanted to look at it, because I thought we froze, or we put a freeze on, and I thought that was because of COVID, and that's why it was from July to December. And I think a lot of the other agencies had done similar, taken similar action, and that's why they were able to put that forth. I would just like more information for the next budget, for reading, second reading, I suppose.
Okay.
And with this one also, you know, the point of the kitchen has come up several times, and I don't know if it would fall into this budget, but I do have to address the inequity issue in the sense that we often think about same thing for Anthony Middle School and Eisenhower Middle School, except they're in two different areas of town, and one does have more challenges, which would be the Northview Eisenhower District area. So I think that is something we should seriously consider. It's something we also did when we did the two rec centers, we didn't take into consideration the Douglas Rec Center, and we had to go, again, get funds and do the Douglas Rec Center. And I see something similar in this case as well. So I would like a little bit more information about that for the second reading and how we can incorporate it. Of course, I'm sure there'll be more discussion. But I think the budget item, the two point, three point five we settled at this one, I wish we could do more, but I think that's about as much as our properties, our property owners can handle at this point to continue services for the city.
Yeah, they're looking at the, your 2022 published mill levy lines, you have the three point four nine nine mills that is going up. Three mills is the RCPD Fund, the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund, and the Kansas Police and Fire, basically, it's the retirement fund, I believe. So three mills of the three and a half mills is going for library, police, fire equipment, and firefighter retirement, probably be the most, some of the most essential, if not the most essential, things that we have to provide. So nobody likes a three and a half mill tax, property tax increase, but only half of it is going to go to the things that the city actually needs and has been putting off. And if you go to the page that listed capital improvement budget mill levies, you'll notice that if you add the nine hundred thousand and the thirty thousand and the zero and the whatever, if you average that out over four years, for 2019 through 2020, you add all those up and divide it by four, the average is like three hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so. So if we would have kept the 2018 amount of three hundred and something thousand for four years, it would be the same amount of money as we're spending now, just it's one big gulp to catch up with the three years of maybe barely nibbling on things that probably needed to be replaced two or three years ago, so. And I thoroughly expect the mill levy to come back down next year, once the 2023 sales tax, Pot County Citywide Sales Tax kicks in, and we're able to start paying for other things with that, because that's how we sold it. Whether we intended to tell the ad agency, sell it this way, or whether they took the ball and ran with it that way, that is what the message was, this is going to help your property tax. And either we got to own that, or relying on people about what the purpose of that property tax was, whether it was accidentally based on a change of messaging, but we told them, and they're expecting property taxes to be less once that sales tax kicks in, and so I'm expecting that to happen. And I realize next year, that I thoroughly expect that with the COVID reimbursements that we're able to get from that seventeen or twelve million dollars, that ought to provide us some cushion in the budget if there's any shortfalls. And I totally realize that hope is not a plan, and optimism is not a strategy, but I am confident that the economy is going to continue to do, improve as it has, or at least stay better, stay in the good position that it is right now, and hopefully get better. And I think we will be okay next year between COVID reimbursement stuff, which we might be able to get next year to provide some cushion, and otherwise, it's just a matter of, the mill levy is mostly supporting essential services, and only a little bit of it is going to the general fund to provide the things that people expect the city provide outside of the basics.
Okay, I know your slide, you know, said that these ARPA funds, this six million, we're not planning on using them, and is that just a city decision, or is it legal, or taken a guess?
The interpretation we have is that we're not, you can't use them, we're not recommending that you use them to offset the 22 budget itself. Now, as we develop a plan for use of those funds, which we have until the end of 2024, our goal has been to help folks leverage some of the other many sources of funds that are available, either directly from the federal agencies, or in some cases, state agencies, which have much shorter deadlines, and so we're trying to leverage those as much as possible. I do think, once we know the final rules from some of these, the rulemaking aspect, we will have some ability to fund projects or equipment, possibly even general government for the 23, 24, 25, and 26 budgets. But in consultation with our financial advisors, it's risky to create any kind of mechanism or pledge to utilize those funds to reduce our operating mill levy. The funds weren't designed for that purpose.
I have a question, and maybe it's for Mr. Kaleko. We will be sitting on six point nine million dollars for a year, because we aren't planning to spend it during calendar year 2022. Is there a rule about what we do, or can or can't do with regard to the interest that we should be making on that money?
The rules on interest are still evolving. At this point, you know, our recommendation is that you invest it in such a way that you can track the investment earnings and set those aside. I want to clarify one thing, there's no prohibition against spending the funds in 22. There is quite a bit of rules on what the funds can be spent for, but there, you know, as long as they are in eligible use, the city is free to start spending the funds now. But as Ron mentioned a moment ago, you know, specific question that we were, one of the specific questions we were asked was whether the funds could somehow be used as a way to offset other program funds and to reduce the mill levy. And I think Ron put it very succinctly and accurately when he said, that's just not what the funds were intended for, and the rules really don't allow for that, you know, certainly not in a way that wouldn't put the city at some financial risk.
So we could spend them next year, and then just toward the end of next year, we would have to do a budget amendment like we do every year to account for them somehow? Is that how that would work then?
Yeah, and it might be possible to spend some of it even this year, once we identify what measures, maybe, you know, one of our goals was to try and leverage all of those outside sources, and then see where the gaps were, what wasn't being met through all of those other sources. You know, the rental assistance program has been, I think, pretty successful for the most part. We haven't had a lot of inquiries, or we have several social service agencies that are assisting both renters and landlords to access the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation funds, which they have, still have a lot of. Just this, this last week, they announced a mortgage assistance program that will complement that for folks that need help with paying their mortgage that have been impacted by COVID. They're taking comments on those rules right now, and so, you know, what are some of the items that aren't being met in our community that haven't been addressed either through previous CARES rounds, or that these funds can go for? They can be spent on specific types of infrastructure programs, so we kind of need to look at all of those particular programs as we move forward with the, in my opinion, with the idea that we have a kind of a long-term plan. We've got two sources of funds this year, and next year, roughly six million each year, that we have until the end of 2024 to even commit. So as you develop the 23 budget and the 24 budget, and even the 25 and 26 budgets, we have until the end of 26 to actually expend those funds. So having a multi-year plan to help spread some of those over various programs, you know, I guess part of what we've heard in the past has been, we received a lot more requests for funding in our, in some of our social service agencies, primarily special alcohol fund entities, because the alcohol funds are short. That would be a program where we might be able to utilize some of those funds potentially to make up some of those differences. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just think there's going to be a whole lot of money left over. By the time we find ideas to spend some of it, I think we're going to have a hard time spending more than a million, million and a half a year, based on how strict the guidelines are so far, because I just don't see that, I'm not sure what they're talking about infrastructure-wise, and if infrastructure was affected by COVID somehow, and so now it needs to be, if you're building a bunch of plastic shields for, to separate people or something like that, that's not going to be a multimillion-dollar thing. So I, I'm just really concerned that the screws are going to be so tight on this money that we're not going to have very many ways to actually spend it, but I sure hope we can, and since we've got five years to do it, I'm optimistic that over time, they'll realize maybe they got the rules too tight, and they'll loosen them and allow us to do other stuff with them. But yeah, as long as we can spend them outside of whatever we pass budget-wise tonight, I don't think there's, we have to worry that they're not in the 2022 budget if they're still available to spend now and next year.
I guess I just don't want to be too cautious in the sense that because we have time until 2026 or 2024, that we're not seeing the needs that are in front of us. I read some of the documents, and I think I read in the Topeka Capital Journal somehow, how Kansas is moving so slow and trying to get how to utilize all the funds, and the state itself has a billion sum and still hasn't allocated it like it should. But in the meantime, we have to meet the needs of our community, and part of that, when we talk about infrastructure, is broadband, internet connections, all of these other things that we saw, and I hope we can utilize some of those funds for our own city technology. IT constantly came up during COVID a lot, and we kept shifting and shifting and shifting. So hopefully, we can use some of those funds to upgrade it, because that's one of the needs that we had, as well as the staff that needs to operate it. Hopefully, that's part of that process as well. But like you said, it seems like every time we talk about this, there's just not enough information, and hopefully, Baker Tilly can help us with that. I think the Riley County Commissioners decided to go with the consultant that worked with them on the CARES Fund and how they allocated it, so maybe they can work in sync to figure out some of those, because it seems to be complex and confusing. But when we talk about the needs in our community, we have quite a few of them, and there is a lot of equity when we're talking about it, instead of just doing the same old, same old, we're not meeting the needs of some of our neighborhoods in our community, and we need to see how to improve them using the ARPA funds as such. But at this point, what I'm hearing you say is that's probably not possible, although I would like to see how we can use it to go retroactive on the pay adjustment for last year, only because it impacts their pensions. They're not making millions of dollars, but it does impact retirement and pensions for our families and our staff and our, in the city of Manhattan.
I, there's two, there's two subjects being talked about here, and one being the ARPA, and I have set that aside in my mind, because that is emergency assistance that isn't something that we expected, and when I came onto the commission, we were in this budget situation. And when I came onto the commission, we were in this budget situation. It wasn't, it wasn't a result of the pandemic in my mind, at least not entirely a result of the pandemic. But we had fundamental structure errors that we had to adjust in order to position our priorities in a way that kept the organization functioning or sustainable. In my mind, I, I asked those questions and actually didn't have to ask those questions. We heard over and over and over and over again that this is the situation. That we heard, you know, the organi, basically, in my words, the organization's cannibalizing itself. It's unable to retain talent, recruit new staff, fill positions. It can't upgrade the 90s technology that it has. The staff and programs and buildings that taxpayer-funded with ballot initiatives and sales taxes are not able to be staffed. And we're a decade behind on wages in terms of comparability of salary to our peers in the region. We're three decades behind on finance technology and that the different departments don't talk to each other, creating more inefficiency and duplication of services. Part of the reason the state has been tragically slow in rolling out their emergency funding is because they didn't invest in the infrastructure and their technology. We lost somewhere between four and $800 million in unemployment because they had a system that they never thought they needed to invest in. And we continue to kick the can down the road, look and grab at pots of money that we think might solve our problem this year rather than putting a structural balance in place. And you've already talked me down to 3.5 and I'm not, you know, obviously wanting to go any lower, but that's only one mill to solve a problem that's going to take much more than that because we've neglected it for 10 years. And everyone will call and say, you know, "You're raising my taxes and it's, it's terrible." But do you want to have the organization function? And I think you do, and that's, that's what I've heard. This is what we need. It's, ends up being about $60 or $5 a month on an average homeowner. So I hope that we can stick to that. And I think what Commissioner Haddasal said earlier, I actually almost 100% agree with. I think we're in alignment and I should tell the population that of the five commissioners that sat up here and listened to the staff and studied the budget, listened to presentations, tried to navigate problems during a pandemic, we heard, we are, we need to shore up the infrastructure of our organization. We can't just pass it off and keep the flat mill levy because we like to tell our voters that we kept the mill flat. We need to actually take care of the people that run the city too.
Of course, my thoughts are a little bit different. Go ahead, London.
No, you, you haven't spoken yet, Mayor.
You can go ahead, no, no problem.
Oh, well, I just wanted to say that I support the 3.5 mill, but I also want to find a way to, I think it's appropriate that we, as a city, try to be responsive to the request, request from Northview. And I'd like to find $80,000 in this huge budget in order to do that. And it's obvious that for the last couple of years, we haven't been able to find, back when it was 60,000, we couldn't find it. So I, I would like for us to double down and see if we can't accommodate this area. And we have a brand-new facility there and we know that there are issues with Northview. There's nobody working on a plan to help Northview. And so to me, this is an opportunity to, to do something tangible. And so that's what I would like to find the money for that. And so I'm not looking for extra money. I just know that there are, we've built, we're building, we're building a lot of things, roads and buildings and we ought to be able to find, I'd like to support the Be Able request too. But I think that they can be accommodated through the COVID or ARP kinds of ways because they're, they've been in existence like two years, exactly matches the COVID situation and all of the emergency things that they do, so much like the homeless shelter and, and other very immediately, those groups that respond immediately. So I'd like to do both of those things and, and I'll be satisfied with what we have. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just make two comments. You know, a couple of you have spoken about trying to put more money in that rec center, but as I look at the history of that, the steering committee chose not to put a kitchen in there. Parks and Rec voted not to put a kitchen in there. City Commission voted not to put a kitchen in there because the thing was a rec center. And so that, that's my issue. It's a rec center. Parks and Rec does not need to take over an additional mission. That's going to have a heck of a budget impact. You know, all of a sudden now Eddie's going to run a kitchen, you know, out of the rec center? That, that doesn't make any sense. Now, I don't have a problem investigating a solution for the problem that was presented, but they haven't really put forth a actual plan. They've got a solution, which is a kitchen. And I, I don't even know how it's going to be used or who's going to manage it or who's going to run it. So that, that needs to be, you know, researched so that we can come up with a solution. But, but they're presenting, you know, an option of it has to be a kitchen there. And that's what troubles me. I don't think we've done really rational problem solving on what's the right way to go about solving the issues that were brought up. And, and I don't think it's tossing money into a rec center and causing it to be totally out of whack of the way it was actually designed. Trying to retrofit that now just does not make any sense. And if you go look at them, it's got a concession area in it that'll, that'll do a number of things. But, but trying to make, make that, you know, almost a commercial kitchen just, just doesn't seem viable to me. And I spent a lot of time working on it and trying to work with the group there. But that really didn't pan out. As far as, you know, the, the mill levy goes on the budget, you know, I hear a lot of talk about, you know, it's all driven by outside agencies. But as I said before, you know, city manager doesn't control those, but the commission does. We've got people on the law board and they voted to raise the, the mill levy, so that's on the commission. But we control the library charter ordinance and we could change it so that it does, it isn't just a flat six mills, but the commission hasn't done that. And when you look at the increases, I got three phone calls today, people saying this mill levy increase is ridiculous. They may have to move out of town. So not, not everyone will agree with what Commissioner Esterbrook said the other day. We, we got to fund this. What they're saying is, look, you got to fund core city projects. And maybe it's just a matter of where you put those dollars. You've got an increase even with a flat mill levy. So put those dollars where you're going to get the best bang and cut some of the other stuff out of there. And that, that's tough to do. But that's got to be the mark on the wall because a lot of people are upset about it. And, and, and the briefing that was given was well-done because if you look at the total picture, you know, it's not, it's not just the city driving, it's, it's everything. You know, the tax rate for Manhattan and the homeowners don't like it. And, and, and the business community doesn't like it. And, and I think that's one of the reasons our growth is inhibited is because taxes scare people away. And I, I talked to a couple of guys the other day, you know, they're living in Junction City. Why? Because you can't afford to live in Manhattan. The housing's cheaper there. So they, they live in Junction City and work here. You know, that, that's sort of crazy. And, and, and I think that one of the root causes is the taxes. And I think we've got to look at city operations and figure out, you know, we shouldn't be doing things like getting rid of a snowplow, I agree with that. You know, people are very angry about those pools not being open, that one pool, Seaco. You know, being, being, being closed all year. And so there's got to be some other things we got to cut, but we didn't get a list of things saying, "Hey, if we go with a flat mill levy, here's the programs we will cut." So we could get public comment on that. Because clearly, if you redirect the money, you can reduce the mill levy. But once you redirect it, well, like, like, like say we did redirect $80,000 to putting some kind of a kitchens facility in Northview, well, somebody else is going to lose 80,000 as part of that. And so that, that's what you have to do with the budget is look at, you know, as I've always said, what are your priorities? And, and if the priorities are pay raises, then what things do you kill in Parks and Rec? You know, because that's, they probably got the biggest budget. Or, or where can you get other money? And I, and I get the Chambers' point there. It's easy to go to the economic development pool and just say, "Let's pirate that money and move it over here," or the water funds, you know, which, which I don't agree with either of those. And what we have to do is grow that economic base so we can generate more tax dollars. And it looks like, you know, the past couple of months, that's been going up, that's good. Not a trend yet. I hope it does become a trend so that, so that we can not rely on the, on the mill levy. And, and I get what, what you said there, Mark, about maybe in the future you can lower it, but mill levy's only been lowered once in 10 years. Only once in 10 years that I've been here. And then it was a miniscule amount, like .1. And so, so I think, you know, if this is passed, it'll, it'll be there forever. It will always be above 50. It's not going, it's not going to come back. So, so I've got issues with it. I still think we got to take a microscope to this and see what else we can, we can, we can pull apart on it. And so I'm, I'm not going to support, you know, even 3.499 because there's people out there that expect us to do better.
I just want to also advocate to city staff, city manager, you know, we don't, we don't know what the pay study might say. We don't know what things might exist in the future. But I think what we've, what I've gathered at least is that, yeah, I would, the, the need isn't across the board increases for everybody. It is targeted, smart investment in, especially in the lower end, in the middle, in the way that other entities, including the fire department and the cities, the teachers have done to switch their trajectory when it comes to staffing. 10 years ago, they were on the same path in that they were losing talent, that they were underpaid, it was hard to recruit. And they did some things that I think we can learn from and I hope that you're able to implement. Obviously, as the commission, it's really hard to tell you that you have to do those things or, or even oversee them as they happen because they, they don't involve the commission as much. But I think as, as you see this push for an increase, that I just want you to know that that is, that is where that's coming from, from me. I, I want that, those tax dollars are for personnel costs and not, and especially on the, on the mid and lower level employees so we can fill up some spots in the city. So just wanted to convey that.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we can have a motion on this, you know, city budget ordinance.
I just have, just a couple of comments. I think what, you know, the last few years that I've been on the city commission, we've increased it just very slightly here and there for bond and interest or for this and that as we shuffled it around. But during the past eight years that I've been here, we've also asked a lot of our staff to the point where they're going to break. We were very, you know, we had a hiring freeze at one point because there wasn't enough money in the budget. So there's going to be attrition and we want them to be able to fill those staff needs. And that's what we heard, a lot of this was about staff needs. It's not just about cutting a little bit here, cutting a little bit there. The, the city of Manhattan, the residents that live in the city of Manhattan have certain expectations for the services they receive. And for the most part, they're happy about the services they receive. We just heard Trent Ambrose speak to those services. And that can only be done when you have staff available on weekends, nights, holidays. The flooding that happened over Labor Day weekend and what, two or three years ago, that took all hands on deck. That comes with a lot of money, but a lot of stress. And, and the way to show respect and make sure that they are taken care of and want to work here as well as recruit, we need to make sure those needs are being met. What we are discussing tonight, the mill, the mill levy is just a little drop in the bucket as what they were asked for. It's certainly going to have an impact on our property taxes, but the community expects certain services. And when those services are not being met, we get a lot of emails. But when those services are being met, we hardly hear anything. But we know that they're doing a good job because we have quality people. And, and I think that's, that's the reason why people choose to live in the city of Manhattan. And I hope they appreciate that, and I think they do. And that's why I'm okay with the 3.5.
Okay, any other comments or? And I guess we can do the motion?
Yep. I, Mayor, I move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance adopting the 2022 city budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, could you please call the rule?
Commissioner Haddasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Esterbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
No.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, now we move on to the general agenda. We have a couple of discussion items, so we won't do any further votes. And the first discussion item gets right to the heart, I think, of some of the economic development issues. And that would be a speculative industrial building program.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Yes, this is just a discussion item tonight. We received a proposal from the Chamber of Commerce to pursue a speculative building program that would come forth to you at a later date if you're willing as a policy resolution to consider. So tonight, I'm just going to give an overview of a little bit about what a speculative building program is, talk about the Chamber of Commerce request and the details of the proposal. We'll take some public comment and then would like your feedback and direction on if you would like staff to come back at a future meeting. Essentially, what's being proposed and what other cities have been doing to spur economic development is create a tax abatement program for developers to create and construct facilities on a speculative basis within a community. And this is creating a facility where there is no prior lease arrangement or understanding in place. They're just building a spec building so that we can fill a gap when it comes to economic development recruitment. The Chamber of Commerce has found it very common that when they are meeting the proposals of prospects to come to Manhattan and bring in jobs and business, they're looking for readily available space. They're not looking to choose Manhattan and then wait 24 months to build a building and then finally get in here and start their work. They want something that's readily available. A lot of the times, the cost to retrofit a building is too expensive. Building new also, as, as I just mentioned, comes at the cost of the delay to do that for the business. So it helps for the prospective business to come in and find space that's readily available. A great example was the BEV Hub Economic Development Deal that we did about a year ago. The Tallgrass Building out of the Business Park was vacant. BEV Hub found that to be viable solution for their business and then they were able to have a ribbon cutting not too long ago and they brought in about 40 jobs to the community. So the Chamber of Commerce did provide you a letter that was in your packet requesting that we adopt as a city a speculative industrial building program. And it is to meet that need and gap in facilities currently here in Manhattan that would assist manufacturing, research development, production, warehousing, storage, and distribution of goods. There is an urgency from, you know, the community and the chamber to, to pursue something like this. Jason Smith is here with the Chamber of Commerce tonight to answer any questions, so I won't go into too much detail. But, you know, he's provided some anecdotal evidence that we've missed out on quite a few proposals here recently just because we didn't have the space available currently in Manhattan. So what some cities have been doing is creating these building programs. The city of Wichita is one that is a current example. We sent you a link to their website in their packet. They've had that for some time. City of Lawrence is also someone who has pursued this as well. So other cities are using this to spur economic development. I'm going to go over some of the slides within that draft proposal with the provisions that the chamber provided that we could consider. It gets, it does, it gets down to the tax abatement and that's what's provided utilizing IRBs. So a developer would come in, they would create and build this building. So a developer would come in, they would create and build this building, and then they would be seeking a tax abatement, a property tax abatement through a certain number of years while the facility is remaining vacant and we're out pursuing people to start leasing and providing jobs in that facility. It also comes with the construction sales tax exemption on materials like other IRBs that we would use. The proposal calls for a 95% property tax abatement in years one through five after the building is constructed. That's to allow, there is time, you know, there is a risk involved with the developer creating that building and then hope that we can bring in some folks to lease that building. So those first five years come in at 95% abatement. Years six through 10 would come out at a 50% abatement if at least 50% of that industrial space is leased and occupied with people and jobs. So for this process, the developer would follow our IRB policy. They would fill out an application and go through that process. There is also a provision within the proposal for consideration that cites that incentives could follow the sale of the building upon your approval. So if a developer came in and built the building and they sold it to somebody else, but that individual was also still trying to lease out the space and it was not occupied, that incentive and abatement would follow with the sale based on your approval.
Timeout.
Yes.
So if the, in years six through 10, if it's not 50% leased, it stays at 95% abatement or they don't get any abatement?
Believe this proposal would be saying that once you're in years six through 10, if it is leased, because that revenue is going in from the lease program, the property tax abatement will reduce down to 50%.
But if it's still sitting empty, does it stay at 95? If it's less than 50%, does it stay at the 95% abatement till year 10?
It would go to zero? So there would be no abatement from years six through 10?
Okay, if they don't have occupants, tough. We, okay, they got five years after that, okay. And if they happen to fill it up in year three, they'll continue to get the 95% abatement just because they're sharp business people? Or once it starts getting full, it goes away? They're going to get it no matter what for the first five years?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the abatement, which is kind of the big piece before I move on?
I understand what's under proposed. I don't like that part of it. I mean, I like the concept, but, you know, I can see having a tax abatement if the building's empty. It's sort of like dark store theory. They're not making any money on it. But once somebody starts leasing it, the portion of it that is leased or occupied, they shouldn't be paying property tax. I have no problem with the IRBs and the rest of it, but I don't like the way that abatement is structured because it's just, we haven't even done that when we brought in some other companies to give them a write-off for that period of time. But I do understand, you know, you wouldn't want to build the building and then have the risk of paying whopping property tax on it while it's empty. So I'm good for that. But once it starts having people in it, then the tax abatement needs to be adjusted based upon the occupancy rate, you know, of that building. If it's half occupied, then they get, you know, half their taxes abated. If it's fully occupied, then they pay taxes. That's the only thing that I don't like about the proposal. The rest of it's fine with me.
I, just as, you know, that scenario makes sense in a logical fashion, but it could create a perverse incentive to keep the building empty if you didn't want to pay taxes. I mean, that's the flip side of that.
Let's walk through a scenario here just to make sure we're all on the same page. The original, the upfront incentive is to try to give the investor some security that they're not going to pay taxes right away on the investment. So you've got this first five years, regardless of whether it's leased or not, where you're offering that 95% abatement. Let's just say the building's worth $10 million. First five years, no taxes paid. If they start occupying the space, some of the attractiveness could be that next five years and how you want to position the incentive with those companies. Keep in mind, this is very highly likely, and I can't think of a scenario unless you bought an existing building, which we're not really talking about. We're talking about land that's not generating taxes today. So the program is twofold. It's trying to get the investor, but it's also trying to attract that company. And if we can attract that company to occupy the space by year five, and we give them half of that incentive, you know, all the taxing jurisdiction starts to benefit at that point, possibly greater if that value of that building's going up because it's occupied with tenants. So that's, it's kind of the two-pronged approach, and I think Wichita is really having success with this. One, on the investment side, but two, in attracting those businesses that possibly may not be in your community at all or generating interest in the possibility of space being at 50% tax rate. So it is a two-pronged approach. We can clearly go with where the commission would like to, but I know Darren and Jason may have comments here too on what they feel like would be attractive for Manhattan and comparable to what Wichita and others are doing. But the approach is really trying to benefit not only the investor, but that future tenant.
I suppose with triple net leases, if the company's going to come in, pay the rent, maintenance, property taxes, all the above, that's where you're getting the big incentive that they realize, okay, my TMI, PMI, whatever it is, is going to only be 50% for another period of time. So that's the other carrot to bring.
Yep. And we're talking jobs that are, you know, obviously would like to see wages that are higher than normal. Industrial space, it's got manufacturing and hopefully other components that are benefits back to the community by way of sales tax and income taxes to the state.
I think the other analogy for this would be that in most cases, we'd be recruiting that company to build something new, and more than likely, there'd be a tax abatement for this new building and those new jobs by that company. But more and more, what we're seeing is companies are looking for existing space. They don't want to go through the delay of building their own building. So this policy helps reward that company, at least for a period of time, to occupy an existing building under those same incentives, just a different way of doing it.
Sorry. So if we went forward with this, let's say, and a company, we have a space for them and they start in 2022, does this sunset in 2032 regardless of how many are in there? Or what does, what is the six to 10 year in reference to? Is it the time from when each of them starts businesses?
So the maximum that you could abate is a 10-year period, and it would be specific per individual applicant. So it's not to say you wouldn't revisit this policy from time to time and say, we're not going to do this after a certain date, or we're going to modify it after a certain date. But typically, if that, they build the building and you're going to do it with that group, and it'll stay with that group as long as they're meeting the provisions. And then whether or not, you may have a different group two years later that comes in
Right.
and says, you know, we'd like to do that over here instead. And so you could do a separate one with them, and that would be for a maximum of 10 years.
But the clock doesn't start till the building's completed.
Right.
Year one is-
Their first tax roll, which depends on when it was completed.
Yeah, okay.
And then it's 50% leased, and then let's say it goes to 70. In year eight, they're at 75% or whatever. Does it, whoever comes in, let's say it's a different organization that starts to build in there as well, does it end? Or they can, you said they can apply separately at that point for a different one?
So the abatement would go with the building owner.
Owner, okay.
The agreements that we would negotiate would convey that, you know, that probably not, it would be inappropriate for them to charge property taxes in the triple net lease. So more likely scenario might be that the initial company that occupied 50% wants to buy the building for themselves. Then you could have a discussion about whether or not those benefits convey to that company for the rest of the time. And the intent here is that they would.
And the rest of the packet, somewhere it said it would be one job for 2,000 square feet? So is that like when they apply? Is that what we are asking for?
Yep. So I'm going to cover jobs here in a little bit. If you want me to continue with some of the other provisions outside of the abatement, I can run through those pretty quickly. There are some minimum thresholds that we're looking for this prospective developer to do in the event that they're allowed to have these incentives. So a minimum building size of 50,000 square feet, minimum clear heights and clear spans so that these buildings are fit to suit for the type of industrial work that we're seeking. That first lease, so it would be a subdivision of no less than half of that building or no less than 25 square feet in that 50,000 square feet scenario. Looking for this building to be located within city limits. From a property tax standpoint, if we're looking at a location that's just outside of city limits, it could lead to an annexation and then future property taxes that wouldn't be on the rolls today. There is that development timeframe that they're looking, so we do want, when this abatement is issued, that once a building permit is provided for construction, they have to start that within 90 days and then complete that facility within 15 months. There is some provisions within this proposal related to restrictions on relocation of existing businesses within 10 miles of the building. So again, the idea from this program is to bring in businesses outside of the community, new jobs to the community. The chamber did throw in a couple of possibilities where it could be waived. You know, you could have an existing business where they're not allowed to expand because of the existing footprint of their current building and it's holding them back, or there's limitations to their existing building that would be detrimental to that business and then in general economic development for the community if those jobs were lost or impacted. The jobs part is we are seeking that the building owner tried to target one job for every 2,000 square feet within the facility. There is this idea of recapturing if the building owner doesn't meet that, so you could recapture some of that tax abatement if they're occupying the square footage that is discussed in there, about 50%, but they didn't meet the jobs requirement. So if they don't meet that one job for every 2,000 square feet, you could recapture some of that abatement if the target's not met.
Jared, what does one job mean? Does that mean like part-time or full-time?
I think it'd be full-time and then within the, any package that's developed from our ED program.
It's usually close to 2,000 hours, just slightly less. Sometimes 1,800 is what we put in the agreement. Sometimes it is 2,000 hours, but it's a full-time equivalent.
Full-time, okay, thank you.
Darren's here to answer any questions too.
I have a question. Is this agreement designed for just one building, one developer? Or is this an agreement that's going on over time so that it can be utilized again and again?
Yeah, so this would be a policy resolution that would be adopted by the city commission where it could happen more than once. You could have multiple developers or one developer doing this multiple times. But each time, each time a building is proposed, it'd be a separate application process, separate IRB process that would follow all of these rules.
Okay. And it's designed so that we do not, I mean, sometimes some buildings over time have just sat here for a long time and unoccupied. And I want to be, how do we assure some kind of success?
So that gets back to the year six through 10. In the event that that building wasn't occupied, it would go back to a 0% property tax abatement and that developer or building owner would need to be paying those taxes. So that's where the incentive is for that year one through five, for that process to occur to hopefully lease that space out.
Yeah, Commissioner Morris, this is Darren Solden, Director of Economic Development, Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. I would just add to that, take a step back and look at a macro level here. One, this is a proposed program that's based off of what we're kind of seeing from a supply and demand standpoint within the market and then within a broader region and the ability of this community to be competitive. And so we believe that there is demand out there for these types of facilities, and we see them being, we see them being filled, and we see projects that come across the table that would fit into this industrial 50,000 square feet or larger model. The other piece of it is that, you know, we have not seen a property of this scale built for this use, built on a speculative basis in this community ever. And so one of the reasons for putting this proposal forward is to try to drive that within the market. And again, the reasons for doing that is because there appears to be demand for this type of a property, and it's something that we need to feel, we need to be competitive on to ultimately create jobs in Manhattan.
Thank you, Darren. Does, let me ask one more question. Does this mean that each of these speculative buildings comes before the commission for approval? Or is this something that is just going to be on automatic? All you have to do is apply and you can get it?
As the proposal's formatted right now, each one of these would go through an application process and have to be approved.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clear up any potential confusion, there's, nobody's been identified, there's no land has been specified. This is, hopefully, somebody, somewhere, a developer will be able to find a piece of land, find a banker willing to loan them some money for a while without any guarantee of repayment. So there's none, we have no idea if there's anybody, any takers at this moment.
We believe there's interest in the community, whether it be locally or from outside. There's a lot of options there, putting a group of people together, a group being two people to many people. Or there may be interest from others that specialize in this type of work, seeing a program like this in place. I know if you look at, some of the other communities have been referenced, Wichita, Lawrence, it's been a combination, both of local developers and of folks from outside of that specific community, but folks that have a knowledge of the market.
Well, I'm fine with pretty much all of it there, especially if the year six to 10 might be a potentially, we're giving them the company that is occupying the space, potentially giving them a tax abatement for being there anyway. I'm fine with kind of leaving that part in there, but hopefully they don't all bail out after 10 years or something when everybody has to start paying property tax again. But an ongoing business would surely, yeah, they've got to have a longer-term vision than that, I would think. So I'm fine with everything you presented.
Yeah, I think when we speak about Wichita, you know, they have 500,000 population. So even when I think about COVID funding, Cedric County as well as Johnson County, millions of dollars because of their population. So that's our competition. So if we have 50,000 plus in our region as our population and we have Kansas State University to pull talent from, hopefully, is this a building that would be considered shovel-ready? Is this a space that would be considered shovel-ready? That's a term I constantly hear. Would this qualify as that?
It would go further than that, to be potentially move-in-ready. Oftentimes, these are built without all of the finishes done and so that that can be customized for a tenant. But yes, we would be beyond, even beyond that with this. Again, someone coming in and developing something on a speculative basis, be able to show it to a client or to a prospect, and it's something that- to show it to a, show it to a, to a client or to a prospect and it's something that would much more closely match the timelines that we see from folks than, than, than a build on a shovel-ready site would.
And the K-State Foundation building that we built, how, just for, for my understanding of size, how many, what square footage is that? Do you know? I don't know.
Is it 60 footprint though, or is it 60 with the? Yeah, so that's 60,000 on three floors, so a 20,000 foot, square foot footprint. And so with industrial space, most likely, you know, you could have a mezzanine, you could do some different things there, but most likely you're talking about, even, even with the clear height and everything that's defined, you're talking about one, one level of, of operations. So more than likely, a 50,000 square foot building is a 50,000 square foot footprint.
Like one?
Yep.
Okay, one space. Minimum size 50,000. So when you say minimum size, that would be the smallest. I don't know where you would get the largest piece from that. Each and every, first least. Yeah, I think we need to try every tool possible. I think if this is something that we feel can be a hook, then we need to try to use it because we're running out of time. And I feel when we talk about jobs, if those are 55,000 plus, as far as salary, that would be great. Students want to stay here, but salary is the reason they leave. Even if they like the job, we're not paying them enough. So hopefully those are the types of businesses we can attract. And being a, a smaller university community, hopefully that's an attraction for the, some of these organizations, as well as having NBAF right here, USDA right here, and all of these other positives. So I think I would be, I, I can support this because there is also a lot of mechanisms in place in case it doesn't happen and for, for taxpayers to get their money back in a way. You know, when we say abatements, I'm never for IRBs or tax abatements, property tax or sales tax abatements. But right now, we're not getting any money. I hope we're not getting any money off of the pieces of land that you're thinking about that is just sitting there. So eventually, we would hope to collect money from that and also get more jobs into our community. As it's structured, I think I can, I can support it and hopefully this is the hook that we're looking for.
Thank you.
So basically, we'd have a shell of a building with a water, electricity sewer brought to the piece of property, sand or dirt inside the building, waiting for some kind of a plan of where to pour concrete, put water, sewer, electrical outlets, all that stuff, so that it cuts the construction time down to a few months or so, just to specialize that for whoever wants it. Generally accurate?
Yep, typically, typically these will be gravel floor, you know, exterior doors, depending on the needs of logistical needs, getting truck access, product on and off, et cetera. Some of those things can be pretty easily added into a, into a shell building. And then obviously finish out for, for things like if there's office space or other specifics there can be done on a, on a tenant-by-tenant basis.
Darren, I remember, Lindamore, I remember a time when we had some buildings at the airport in the airport industrial area and call centers came in. Did they use IRBs?
I defer to Ron on that one.
I don't believe we issued any IRBs for either of those call centers. We did give them some fairly large incentive packages though. Direct, direct aid.
I remember, I, I just, I caught the part about the, the owner could leave the agreement after 10 years and we would still have the building and I, or whatever, and I just wondered, because they left after 10 years. And so I just want to be sure that we have something that's a check on a kind of a safeguard or a, so that we don't, aren't taken advantage of by some slick person, slick organization.
But I think as.
Well, I, I, I think it sounds like something I'd like to try. You know, we have had, we've had that Bev Hub as a major success, but we've not had many, you know, large-sized successes, and this sounds large. So it, it's worth trying and it's just, you know, I appreciate all that you've, you've put into it to pull this proposal together. I, I'd just like for you to keep an eye on it because it is going to go on into the future indefinitely and so that it, you know, it's, that it's, it's good for everyone. There you go. Thank you.
We are just so much smarter than 20 years ago. We, we have learned some very expensive lessons. That first call center where we built them a building but didn't keep the ownership to where, when he left, he, he still owned the building and it's been sitting empty for 10 years now. So this is, the great thing about this thing is it's really no out-of-pocket money for the city and there's, there's only upside. We're not using EcoDVL money to build a, a city building, which would cost twice as much as it would if some private developer built it. We're not tying up, yeah, a bunch of city money. This is all, this is the smartest thing we've done in a long time for economic development because there's no money out of our pocket initially. We'll let, there's some opportunity cost which we'll recoup within a few years. But compared to the things we thought were smart 20 years ago, but turned out to be stupid, this is pretty much the, the best thing we've come up with in 20 years, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm for the proposal. I, I would still tweak that tax abatement thing a little bit. And I get, I think Jason, you did a pretty good job of explaining there. In my mind, you know, if, if it's vacant, the guy doesn't pay any taxes for the space that's vacant for, you know, 10 years. That would be the incentive for the person to build the building because it lowers his risk. And I get, you know, the tax abatement then would benefit any company you bring in, but I think you got to look at that as eaches and I'd like to see that sort of separate and say, just like a economic development request, when a company comes in, they could say, okay, we, we want a tax abatement, otherwise we can't come in. You know, so, so I would structure this to protect the initial development, which is what we want, and then have a little separate piece there for whichever companies come in. And that way, we could, we could look at what it is and if it's necessary, fine, if it's not, fine.
One thing.
That's my only little, little, you know, tweak on that.
I think, I think something just to recall, when someone comes in and fills out that application, and we actually issue industrial revenue bonds and we put an agreement together, is going to be with the owner. Now the owner's almost like the foundation. They're going to perform as a developer and they're going to try to occupy space. So they're out there shopping the space, they're responsible for the space, that's who our agreement is with. They want to pass on those abatements, those savings, they will in those packages. We're always going to have the responsibility back with the owner. Now unless that owner divests themselves, you know, then, then we're not in a relationship with the owner anymore. So that there will be a bit of a developer role here by that ownership group who has the agreement with the city.
Get my speaker back on. Do we have any public comment on this topic? Okay, seeing none. Were you going to say something, Jason, or no? No, okay. Seeing, seeing no public comment, we'll, we'll close that. And it sounds like, you know, as far as guidance goes, it looks like pretty much universal to proceed on and see what we can do with this so we can bring it up on a legislative session and have a vote.
Appreciate the discussion.
We can move on to the next discussion item, which is donated art policy.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We have a discussion item this evening on donor-initiated public art. We were in front of you in June and got some feedback to head to the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board about this policy. On August 11th, it was presented and some feedback received that day about the policy itself. This is a, one piece of a public art program. Last time we were in front of you, we talked about multiple pieces and a lot of different efforts and energy that could go into art. This is when that donor desires a say in the outcome, whether that's in the location, the actual art, the artist or the theme of the art. They're willing to provide either the art itself or cash to have that installed and they're looking to the city to facilitate that installation or at least the process to select and install that piece of art. The policy you have before you talks, walks through really a flow chart. The first thing we like to do is see staff review this application. We're going to look at it from a variety of different perspectives, but majority of them are from a technical perspective. Location, the schedule, the safety of the piece of art, the costs associated with it, the materials, the installation. We're going to look at it from a lot of different views and we're going to provide feedback back to that applicant. Think about a piece of art that might be, being proposed at the corner of the park and they want to come as close to the corner as they possibly can. Well, we've got some vision triangle issues we need to deal with. We need to make sure there's utilities aren't underneath this piece of art if it needs a foundation. We got to make sure, you know, there, there isn't thing above it in terms of electrical lines that they can't work within. So there's just a technical feasibility to what it is some folks may propose. Once the staff's through that feasibility and it reaches a point with the applicant where it's ready then to, to go to the advisory boards, we would go to the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board as well as any additional boards that might be impacted. Again, piece of art in city park, you're going to go to Arts Humanities Advisory Board. You're also going to go to the Park and Rec Advisory Board. Get reactions, get feedback. In addition, if it's located in Aggieville or it's located in downtown, we'll be sending it to those groups for reactions and feedback. And they can look at that location, that purpose and, and the program that's being submitted. We anticipate two to four weeks, by the time the application's completed, submitted to staff, set that meeting, make sure we have enough details, look at the site, look at the art, make sure it all works from a technical standpoint. In a draft you have this evening, we're looking for 90 days for our boards to react. We put 90 days in there because sometimes our boards struggle to get quorum. Sometimes applications can hit the end of the year, around holidays, you know, December and January are tough months sometimes for our boards to meet. So we wanted to make sure we at least gave, you know, that three-month window for that board to react. But we also didn't want it to linger on and it'd just be sitting there for six months waiting and, and looking for a quorum, looking for that reaction. But once we get those back, within 60 days, we would be before you all for that consideration. This is a, a flow chart. I hope it's not too small for those who are at home, but the commission, you have this in your packet this evening too. It's basically just a flow chart of what I've just described, where city staff looks at it from a technical feasibility standpoint. If feasible, it goes to the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board, goes to other city boards, DMI and ABA if necessary. City commission has that full discretion, so you will get all the input and feedback, not only from city staff, but from your advisory boards, DMI and ABA. I would envision there are going to be some items that are going to be controversial. You may have a split, you may have differing opinions in the audience that evening, but we have brought this policy and this process back to you to hear those in public and for you all to, to make that decision moving forward. There is an additional provision within the policy dealing with the artwork being removed. We would ob, obviously look to Ahab for their recommendation based on some agreed-upon criteria, but it ultimately is a city commission determination. We would remain consistent in having city administration retain the ability to remove it if it becomes unsafe or in disrepair. That's, those are the provisions we added to the policy. It's fairly straightforward. There's not a lot in addition to that this evening. Happy to answer questions. We, in our office, this will be taken over from an oversight and facilitation. I've talked with our staff and we feel like we can handle this at this point in time. We'll keep the coordination going. We'll also work with customer service and the website to make sure the application forms are there with the process, trying to provide that potential donor enough information to get started and interact with city staff. Looking for feedback this evening on the proposed donor-initiated art. Any other thoughts or direction you may have, but city staff's happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Looks, looks good to me, you know, because right now we have nothing. So this is a, a giant leap forward. At least we have something and we can always tweak it if it needs improved later. So I think it's, you know, ready to see it move on. And Linda, I heard you speaking there.
Yes, I, I do, thank you. I'd just like to be sure, I know that there have been, there's been an interest by the community, the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation in donating or some money or art to the city, but because we haven't had a policy, they've been reluctant. So I want to be sure that what you're presenting tonight is, will meet their needs so we can have another round of art in our downtown area or whatever. Nothing in here would stop that, is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner, and the Greater Community Foundation is here this evening as well, and I would anticipate they would make comments here shortly.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. I think that was one of the things that the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation having funds now, which the Arts and Humanities never had funds before to work with. And I think the 10 art pieces that we were able to put forth was very challenging and long. So with that, we were prompted to come up with a policy and like the mayor mentioned, we didn't have a policy before. So there was this tension or friction or communication, whether it's with downtown board, with our artists, with the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, with the community. So there was just a lot of discussion going on. So I'm glad we have something a little bit more simple. So what you're talking about here is a art piece on public property right-of-way, which a process where the city would look at the technical aspects of it. It would go back to the Art, Arts and Humanities Advisory Board. They would also do their take on it, review it and talk to the other organizations if they wanted to go with downtown, Aggieville, West Loop, whatever area they're talking about, meet with their group. And then the city commission, they would come back, I suppose, with their recommendation and the city commission would make the, the final decision on it. To me, that's a little bit more doable. Also, the other piece I like about this is the timetable, that there is a 90 days or 60 days, so it's not just going on and on and on and on. There is some kind of timeframe or a timeline for community organizations to work with and to expect a decision of some kind. We're not talking about murals or anything on public, private property. That's still, you know, up to private entities. Murals, again, if it's a, a city thing, then we can discuss those as well. I hope this meets the needs. To me, it looks simple and doable, but I am looking for feedback. I haven't received any emails on it, so I'll wait for that. Thank you.
The only, the only thing I would react to usually is, or Commissioner Reddy, is the, if it's in West Loop, it's not coming to us, just so you're aware. I mean, that's all private property. Now maybe if it was adjacency to West Loop on city right-of-way, you know, now you've got an established business group that might have a reaction. That's, that's a fair point.
Clarification, so on public city property.
Thank you.
We can go ahead and have public comment. Is there any public comment on this particular proposal? We're hoping Vern would speak.
Vern Hendricks, 3508, Veresta Drive, and I'm the president and CEO of Community Foundation. Just to clarify a couple of things, it's, it has not been a requirement of ours to have a policy, so we're, that's not a condition for our gift. What we're, several years ago, Lincoln and Dorothy Deal donated several million dollars to the Community Foundation and art was one of the specific uses for the funds. And so consequently, in, in honoring that agreement, we've been searching for opportunities to give the money away for art purposes and, and reached out to the city for this whole process. And so we have since then, obviously, talked with the school district and we've talked with some individual citizens, and so we're going to continue those conversations. and we've talked with some individual citizens, and so we're going to continue those conversations. It's not our process as a community foundation to go seek out people to give money to. Generally, they come to us, and we have several funds that we manage there, and that's the way we like it. And so at this point in time, I mean, I'm, I think it's great that there's a policy developed for you guys to operate on, you know, and we look forward to entertaining any, any requests the city has to make. And for locations, we do have a community arts committee made up of citizens of, that are trustees, but they're citizens of Manhattan that, that have an art interest and an art expertise. Two of the members are from the Ahab board, and so, and that is a part of the process for communication purposes. We like them to know what's going on, so that they don't feel short-sighted. Part of the committee, not the official part of the committee, but meeting with the committee has been representatives from the, from the beach and from the MAC board and, and from the West Art Gallery, and then another individual on the State Art Board. And so what the Community Foundation is really interested in doing is everybody be on the same page, marching through the same time. We want to provide art for this community in several ways, several locations, several entry points, so Manhattan is seen as an arts community, and so people enjoy art. It's not our desire to throw the walls over the fence and somebody approve, somebody not approve, and the whole process. We'd really like to work on this together as a team, so that people, so nobody's wasting any time. And so from that standpoint, you know, we would encourage, you know, if, if the city and, you know, the, any locations, any new building, right now, we're talking to the school district about, you know, some of the new facilities that they've got, and they're, they're going to reach out. They've got somebody identified as kind of their art expert that's going to talk to us. And so we're excited about helping them out, you know, from that standpoint. But, you know, we don't want to force anything on the city that the city doesn't want. And so, you know, we're, we're going to move forward in a different direction to, but certainly welcome any opportunities the city may have. But if you're expecting us to come back here with a proposal for art to put someplace, that's not going to happen. I mean, we want, we want the ideas from the city. We would love to have 50 art projects on the table in some sequential order to, to fund them and when the, when they become necessary, maybe the purchase of some art, maybe the development of some art, maybe a sculpture, maybe murals, whatever it be. We want the art community to rally together and really be a part of this whole process. We don't want to force anything on anybody that, that doesn't want it, and so that's not our process. So if anybody's got any questions, I'll happy to take them. But I just wanted to make sure that the policy has not been our requirement, and it never has been from day one, so.
Got a question, Vern.
Sure.
I think you said it's not your intention to throw balls over the fence? Is that a baseball reference, or?
I'm pretty familiar with that, so that'd be good. So if that's the only question, so. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Hartman-Bork, and I'm the chair of the Arts Committee for the GMCF. I spoke to you all before about this, and I think Vern summed up the information accurately. I think what I would like to address is the interest in the community, in downtown, in Aggieville, from all different sorts of people, about all different sorts of art. And Commissioner Hassel, you mentioned that about the economic development. It's, it's time that we move forward and do something that benefits everyone. And I think that's the case with the art. And we are not looking to be the rogue, as Vern mentioned. We want to all work together, and we want people to come into town and say, this town has something going that others don't. We want to attract people to move here, to work here. We want to attract people to retire here. We want to attract people to stay here. And if you look at other communities around us, they have points of interest all over, whether it be their bus stops, their benches, their trash receptacles, their photo opportunities in parks, their murals. Those are the kinds of things that are very simple to get done and that we would like to work as a team across the community to enhance what Manhattan is. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the commission. Any other commissioner comments?
What kind of timeline are we looking before we get to something we can actually vote on? Is that next meeting, or now you got to send it through legal, and it's going to be weak still?
I think we're teed up and ready to bring it back.
Okay.
I think, I think it's good. I think it's simple. I mean, I say simple, but I'm sure there's a lot of work that went into this and work to go on as we move forward. But if this is, I do agree, we need to make our community more aesthetically pleasing. I think we have a lot of quality-of-life initiatives that are really great for our community, but we certainly don't have the art that it desires and requires for us to, for people coming in to appreciate everything that we have. So I look forward to this going up. And I will say Karen McCullough has been a strong advocate about policies. And so if I have heard anything, that's something I've heard from her after she's not serving as city commissioner anymore, but she has certainly been a strong advocate for this for a long time. And hopefully, this brings in more art now that we have a policy. Hopefully, it's one barrier, hopefully, that's been removed.
So, you know, my thought. Go ahead, Linda.
Oh, I, I'm encouraged by having this policy. I think it's just what we need, and, because we've been stalled for a while. So I'm anxious to move forward, and this looks like the right vehicle. So thank you for everyone's effort to pull it together.
Okay, and my thought on this, after listening to what Vern had to say, we've got an arts board that really never had any funding. So I could, does this policy support the idea of like, the arts board coming up with an idea, community-based, from everyone, and then them asking the Community Foundation for money? And then the applicant would be the arts board, if they got the money from the Community Foundation, and then we could run it through the system? Is that workable in this type of environment?
That might be something that needs to be worked a little bit more as to, I mean, typically, that board is an advocate. I would think part of that would be them, you know, is the city going to be an applicant for one of our facilities, or our park, or our land? Or is there a reasonable sponsor for that? But certainly, they could be a sounding board for pressing that idea forward.
Yeah, but it sounds like to me that's what's got to happen, because what I heard was that the Community Foundation's not going to say, here's $10,000, go do something. They're going to have to have an application sent to them, and I guess the arts board, if you don't agree, let us know. But, but I could see that working, and there's your source of funding. Because the big hole on that's always been you didn't have a funding source. Well, I think Vern can provide it, but we would have to ask for it. And then, as Ron said, we'll have to work out, you know, maybe there's some subgroup or something that becomes the applicant, and it's not actually the board member.
I, I think that sub-applicant would be the, Jackie's committee might be the ones that, would be the applicant, perhaps, to run it through the, no, never mind. Okay, so.
Just to remind the commission, this is about a donor who wants to have a say. There've been other things described here this evening by way of public art. You know, if there's just cash donated to the city, and the city's free to go put art wherever it wants, without a donor having a say, that can happen at any point in time, and we can facilitate our own process.
Right.
This is about donors wanting to have a say. There are other, as I said, this is one piece of an art program that many cities have adopted multiple pieces, too. What we're, what we're attempting to address this evening is a donor who wants to have a say over where the art is, what the art is, within the city's right-of-way. There, there are a number of other alternatives out there, and you heard a few tonight. But for us to react and engage with somebody who wants to put something in the right-of-way, the policy will apply.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're all in agreement that we want to proceed with this?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that hearing this is one piece. It also brings to mind that the city, or I hear, the city shouldn't be trying to do all things for all people. It'll stretch us out too thin, and, and we can't do that. But in this, in this regard, this policy is kind of allowing the reverse of that and that all people can be able to serve the city, and it's a piece of that. And I think that's, that's unleashing that creativity. It's a good thing.
So this is probably public art policy one, and there'll be public art policy, they, policy, there'll be multiple policies as we come up with, there are different scenarios. This is donor, donor say art. There'll be, yeah.
So we, I would differentiate between a policy for this as opposed to procedures. So the Douglas Center is a good example, where we decided as part of our public facility, we, we wanted an art piece, and we budgeted for that art piece. We worked with Ahab to come up with a process to select an artist to do the work. So that was the process in our facility. Most of those processes to accommodate those type of requests are just that. They're processes that work through our normal structures. This is specific to where you have a donor involved that may temporarily or permanently want to build some type of, or donate some type of art, but they want to be involved in that process. If they want to just say, hey, I've got this sculpture that can be relocated. Do you want it? No hands? Then we'll go through a process to receive that, and that would certainly involve that Ahab board and may involve another city board relative to where it's going to be parked.
Okay, so we're all in agreement to proceed on on that? And that brings us to the end of the agenda for tonight, so the meeting.